Well, welcome everybody to the City of Bellevue Regular Council meeting for May 24th, 2021. Tomorrow, May 25th marks the one year anniversary of George Floyd murder. And I wanted to state that I felt that it was so important and I knew something that our entire city embraces that I wanted to distribute the statement amongst the entire council. So, Councilmember Stokes will start with you. Councilmember Stokes, I'm afraid you're still muted.
Yeah, as the mayor said, tomorrow, May 25th marks the one year commemorative of George Floyd's murder. Mr. Floyd's murder, which was captured on video, was an event that changed the country as its impacts and its impacts were felt everywhere and here in Bellevue.
Last month, the lead officer in the incident was convicted by a jury of murder, which was an important step towards accountability and change.
Bellevue stands in solidarity against racism, prejudice, bias, hate, and social inequity.
It is critical that we continue to have tough, uncomfortable, and meaningful conversations with our diverse residents about their experiences.
We are proud of the Bellevue Police Department's dedication to protecting everyone in our community and its culture of continuous improvement.
It is critical that all levels of government strive to protect and enhance the lives and well-being of all community members, including those who may have been traditionally excluded.
I think by working together can help advance a meaningful commitment for change and build on our Bellevue values of diversity, equity, inclusion. Thank you to everybody. Would you like to call the roll?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
So we have a proclamation tonight, and proclamation is about National Safe Boating Week. We have Gray Blackstock, Dale Vodica, and Michael Reichstein here to accept the proclamation. And we have Councilmember Lee to read it. So Councilmember Lee, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas recreational boating is a popular activity in the many lakes and waters in and around Bellevue. And whereas knowledge and skills are important in reducing human error and improving judgment, allowing boaters to take precautionary measures to protect themselves and their friends and family. And whereas failing to follow nautical rules, using drugs or alcohol while controlling a boat or choosing not to wear a life vest adds significant risk. And whereas in 2019, there were 106 boating-related accidents in Washington State, resulting in 27 deaths and 55 injuries. And whereas the proper equipment such as life jackets and preparedness by checking the weather saves lives. And whereas the U.S. Coast Guard and U.S. Power Squadron are invested in the well-being of the community and will check vessels for safety. Now therefore, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City of Council hereby proclaims the week of May 22nd to 28th, 2021, as National Safe Boating and paddling week, and urge all citizens to practice year-round safe boating practices and to boat smart, boat safe, and wait.
And thank you, Councilmember Lee. So I know that our guests would like to make a statement. Clerk, can you help make that happen?
Yes, the individuals are panelists and can speak. I'm not sure who is speaking first, but.
Hello. Well, first, I want to say thank you from Mayor Robinson. I have a lot of people there to say thank you. Janice, it was good to see you as the council member. Janice is on, and I have Brad Miyaki, and we have Conrad Lee here, so I'm among friends. You know how important it is for us to work with the safety of the public? And I do believe that there's just a handful of people, a relatively small amount, that can make a big difference. So today I want to, well, sometimes I will go to people and I'll tell them, we are the auxiliary. I want them to know the difference, though. We don't carry guns. We don't give tickets. But we do want to be very sure that people are safe out on the water. So here's my shipmate Dale Vodica, and he's going to tell us some things that we've been doing, what's happening to protect our fellow citizens.
Oh, thank you, Larry, and thank you to the Bellevue City Council and to the mayor and all the residents of the City of Bellevue. We asked for this proclamation, and we partner with the city every year for this as a reminder to the City of Bellevue residents that boating has certain inherent risks, and they need to boat smart. You'll notice that the proclamation includes paddling, which is the highest, unfortunately, the highest area in boating, which is involved in accidents and.
Me, Mr. Vodica.
I'm sorry, I pushed the button, sorry. So I, yeah. Paddling is becoming an issue. The paddlers need to be educated. As was indicated, the deaths in Washington State are significant. We were the fifth highest in the nation, and we were also sixth highest in property damage with over $2 million worth of damage in 2019. Unfortunately, during 2020, the statistics went up a little higher, we think. So we need to get, we need to get busy and educate the boaters that are out there and let them know that the water, that it may, it might be a really nice weekend, you know, where the atmos, the ambient temperature is in the 60s, 70 degrees, but this time of the year, that water was snowed just a couple of weeks ago, and it's still really cold. So that's what makes it very dangerous to go boating in this time of the year. So just take that into consideration and dress appropriately with life jackets. And I'd like to accept the proclamation on behalf of Division Two from the Coast Guard Auxiliary and the United States Power Squadron, Bellevue Squadron. Thank you.
Wonderful. Do we have Michael Reichstein here at all? No? Okay, well, thank very much. We appreciate you working so hard to keep us all safe. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for commissions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There is one speaker signed up this evening, and that is Randy Bannaker. Mr. Bannaker, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the W City Council. Randy Bannaker, speaking on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors. Tonight, you're going to talk again about the multifamily tax exemption program. And I just want to thank you for your work on this issue. It is a really important program to get right and to attract participants that will build the units that will offer some greater affordable housing options in the City of Bellevue. I specifically want to thank you for your work in the past two study sessions in March and April to expand the program to all multifamily zones in the city and also zeroing in on that 80% AMI affordability to, again, I think, attract the greatest, the largest pool of prospective participants in the program. With that, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bannaker. And Mayor, at this point, that was the end of our pre-registered list, and there are no other attendees in the meeting currently.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Robertson, you have some recommendations for appointments to the Transportation Commission. Would you like to bring those forward?
Yes, I would. Thank you. So I did, we did outreach. We had two openings on the Transportation Commission. We did two rounds of recruitment, one in March for a partial term and one in late April for a full term. So we combined the two recruitments into one interview period. We interviewed with the Director of Transportation, Andrew Segalakis, with staff to the Transportation Commission, Kevin McDonald, and the Chair of the Transportation Commission, Lorianna Marchente. And we invited, I think, 10 people to interview, and we had interviews for everyone that accepted. And we all rated the candidates, and two candidates really came out on top, and those are Jonathan Curse, who used to work at Inrix, now works at Verizon, and Nick Redhune, who's in the real estate industry. Both of these candidates are 100% in on Bellevue's vision, on our recently adopted, updated council vision of a multimodal, multimodal system for our transportation. So I would move appointment of both of these gentlemen to the two open seats as designated in the agenda.
Okay.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations to the two new members. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, we have two study session items tonight, and I asked Mr. Miyaki to introduce the first one, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This first topic is on the multifamily tax exemption program update. And just by way of background, the council actually launched an update to the city's existing, also known as the MFT program, in October of 2020. This program essentially allows for tax exemption for developers in exchange for providing affordable housing. To date, staff have been working in partnership with the stakeholder community over the past few months, as well as develop a program that increases utilization and further city policy objectives. Tonight's study session provides follow-up information regarding the MFT package discussed by council on April 19th. Tonight's staff is seeking direction from the council to prepare for a public hearing and final action on the MFT program update at a future council meeting. With that, joining us this evening is Emile King, Assistant Director, and Elizabeth DeRat, Senior Planner from the Community Development Department. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Emile to start the presentation. Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and members of council. Staff are here tonight for study session number three on the MFT program update. The multifamily tax exemption program is a very important part of Bellevue's strategy to produce affordable housing within the city. It allows for a market-based approach to help meet our significant affordable housing needs. The existing MFT program is being revised to first and foremost increase production of affordable housing in market-rate residential projects while furthering city policy objectives relating to affordable housing. Council has had thoughtful policy discussions to date on the numerous related facets of the MFT program, including the geographic extent of the program, unit sizes, targeted rent levels, the interface of MFT with other incentives, parking, and a new concept for rent stabilization for renewing MFT tenants. Next slide, please. Direction was received by staff on April 19th to proceed with an MFT package. The April 19th direction from council brought together individual program elements into a balanced package that was intended to deliver results and be feasible as a whole. Staff will review a few of the requested follow-up items as requested by council members at the April 19th meeting. The next step is for council to then direct staff to tonight to prepare for a public hearing and final action on the MFT program update to occur at future meetings. Next slide, please. I'd now like to hand things over to Elizabeth DeRat, the project manager, for this effort.
Thank you, Emile. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of council. Today, as Emile said, we're just going to walk through reviewing the direction that we've received so far and giving a little bit more detail on some of the additional elements that were discussed back in April. And we're going to start off by just reviewing the schedule and then end by also looking at next steps and scheduling a public hearing potentially. So here's our schedule. You can see we are here at study session number three in May, and if all goes well, we'll be able to schedule a public hearing and hopefully be able to adopt the code in July. The public hearing is required by state legislation on the geographic expansion in particular, and we'll go into a little bit more detail at the end on that. So just to review what we discussed the last couple sessions, in March, we got direction from council on a few elements of the program, including expanding the program geographically to all areas of the city that allow multifamily land uses and simplifying the affordability across all of those areas to a baseline of 80% AMI. And we also talked quite a bit about retaining the ability for owners to layer or overlap the MFT program with other programs available under the land use code, and that that could trigger additional affordability requirements. And then when we moved on to the April session, we got into a little bit more detail on some of those elements. So for the layering and overlapping, we received direction to pursue 65% AMI for that, for those units that are overlapped or layered. And we also got additional information on the family-sized unit alternative. And so under today's program, there's a requirement that 15% of the units of any project pursuing MFT be either two bedrooms or larger in size. And we came up with an alternative to allow some other projects to still use the MFT program through another couple of options, which we'll present shortly. And then we also got direction on an approach for parking, so allowing owners to offer parking at a 30% discount to affordable renters outside of the downtown area. And then we also discussed a 3% cap on rent increases for MFT tenants that are renewing their leases. So this is a package, is something that we discussed in April, and we got direction to return with a little bit more information on that. So we're going to walk through each of those elements today. And here's just looking at the package as a whole and comparing it to the existing program. So you can see that simplifying the AMI levels to that 80% baseline, allowing that overlapping at 65% AMI, having that parking discount available at 30% discount, and that rent stabilization or cap on the rent increases for renewing leases. And that anticipated utilization, you can see on the right, currently we're getting between 50 and 75 units per year, and that's not including taking out the units that are also counted under the land use code. This is all units under MFT. And then you can see that we anticipate this package that we're discussing is potentially slightly more than doubling that utilization based on recent trends in permits in multifamily across the city. So walking through each of those elements in a little bit more detail, that family-sized unit requirement I mentioned, our current requirement is that 15% of units be two bedrooms or larger. And we got direction to retain that existing requirement as a baseline, but to also allow an alternate pathway so that projects that really are focusing on a different clientele and really focusing on studios and one bedrooms are still able to utilize the program, but potentially with either deeper affordability or more units in total. And so this package included 25% of the units would be affordable at the same levels, or they could choose an option to have slightly deeper affordability at 70% AMI instead of the 80% AMI baseline. And in that instance, it would only apply to the studios and one bedrooms, which is an additional piece that we discussed in April. And then for the parking approach, we just wanted to compare to our current approach so that it's clear what the changes are. Currently, the MFT program has no impact on the number of parking stalls that are being required as a minimum under the land use code, and that would be retained. Those are two separate conversations. But the current approach for providing parking costs and covering the monthly rent of a parking stall for affordable tenants is included in the affordable rent under the covenant today. And Bellevue also accommodates flexibility under these instances if they're unique circumstances. All the art cities are using this approach today but are planning to revise this approach as we've discussed in the past. And so the new approach that Bellevue is hoping to pursue is to not include parking in that affordable rent total, but to still recognize that it is important to many affordable tenants, and so offer them a 30% discount on any parking stalls when they're outside of the downtown area. Within downtown, this would not apply, and affordable tenants under MFT would be required to pay full price for parking stalls. This is a new approach, and it is something that is going to be a little bit different from what other art cities will pursue. And so there might be some potential increased administration, especially related to compliance requirements for this new approach. And then the final element, which was a completely new element discussed in April, is the idea of rent stabilization. There have been a number of years, especially recently, where affordable rents have increased substantially each year, and it was brought up that it would be really great to be able to provide a little bit of kind of predictability and stabilize those a little bit, especially for tenants who are staying in a unit year after year. And so the proposal is to cap the affordable rent increases to 3% for those tenants who are staying in their MFT unit or similarly sized unit in the same project, and that it would apply to those units only, which is about 40% of MFT tenants in any given year. And this has a potential to really, you know, increase over time. So if you have several years in a row where the affordable rents are increasing substantially, tenants who are staying several years in a row in their unit will actually see a compounding effect because they will be each year having their increase limited to 3%. So it really helps them out in those years where there's a number of years in a row in particular. It also would allow for kind of catching up, so owners could increase the affordable rents up to 3% in years where it's not increasing so quickly. And that allows it to increase up until the HUD baseline, which is the baseline used today for affordable rents. And because this is, this is a new system that would require tracking individual tenants and whether they're returning or not, it would potentially require a little bit of additional administration as well. And on this slide, you can see what the impact of that might be. This is the last 21 years of affordable rent increases, and you can see, highlighted in yellow are the years where it increased more than 3%. So you can see, those are the years where it would have a limiting effect. And so you can see they tend to be clustered, and that means that tenants who stay in the same unit for several years in a row in those times would see a substantial benefit from a program like this. So finally, we wanted to wrap it up by just talking about next steps and the process for scheduling a public hearing on this. So here's that schedule again. You can see that we could potentially schedule a public hearing on June 28th. In order to do so, we do need to have a resolution come back. We could do that on consent at the next session in two weeks, and that would just set a resolution to set that date for the public hearing, and then we would hold that public hearing at the end of June. We are hoping to be able to discuss the entire package of program elements at that public hearing, but we are only required by state law to cover the geographic expansion. But we do want to make sure that we are welcoming to comments across the board on the full package of elements. And with that, I'm going to leave it here. You can see on the right that there's kind of each of those elements of this package that we discussed today, just kind of for a reminder for giving us very clear direction on next steps. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. So I'm the, each member asks questions or make comments, and with Councilmember Lee, then Stokes, Robertson, Barksdale, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Councilperson, and myself. So Councilmember Lee, would you like to start us off?
Well, we had extensive discussion at the last meeting not that long ago. So I'm happy that the staff come back after listening to our input, and I haven't changed my mind, and I still stay with my comments, and I like what's presented. So that's it. Thank you. I'm ready to support putting on the consent calendar and get this going.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I'm very excited about this, too. I think it's been a really good discussion. I appreciate the staff coming back and the work that's been done and taking our questions and concerns into account, and it's a little complicated, and I think you've done a great job of getting us there. I do want to note, I mean, this is a great, you know, thing going forward. I'm hoping that in the long run, we'll have more than 110, 160 units per year, given the size of the demand out there, but it's a huge step for us. So I think if this program really works well with all the pieces we have in it and getting more people from the business community as well as general public involved in this, that we can continue to increase, but it's a big step for Bellevue, and I'm very proud of and very excited about seeing this go forward. So again, for staff, thanks very, very much for working with us on this and providing us with the great tools to, you know, fulfill our commitment to affordable housing for residents in Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the staff, and also thank you to the homeless, not the homeless, the affordable housing providers, a human development consortium, and the Bellevue Chamber for really working as stakeholders to find a really great middle ground compromise, the grand bargain approach to the MFT program. I think that this strikes the right note. I did have one quick question, and that is the parking, the 30% reduction, it's still in there that people can't then sublease their spaces, right? Yes, okay. I see, I see a nod. So no, I'm ready to set this for the public hearing and get going on it. I think that this is one of those, we'll all talk at the night of the public hearing when we pass it, but I just wanted to say, you know, great work on the part of everyone, and this is one of those moments where we're going to be able to look back to in a few years and say, see, that's the step that helped us generate so much more affordable housing that the people of this city really, really need. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And thanks to staff. I just have one part that I would like to add, and that's around evaluation. So I know we're talking about increased unit production from the MFT program. I'll be interested in how this, what the experience is like for affordable tenants.
Chick-fil-A.
Somebody needs to be muted. Not you, Councilmember Barksdale, who's in the background of somebody else's. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So if we could, and I won't, I mean, I have specific ideas, but I'll leave it to staff. For us to come up with metrics for the overall program beyond just unit production, maybe cost benefit, I think you had that in the documents, and then metrics for each of the elements here that are listed, so that we could see how it's performing at each of these levels or for each of these elements. And then for the qualitative feedback, is there a way for us to capture feedback from affordable tenants qualitatively, maybe through arts or the city? Is that something we could do? See how the program's working for them?
That is something that we can look into further, Jeremy, to get more information from the rental tenants. Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you. That's all I, thank you. That's all I, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Um, yeah, I, great, great example of public-private partnership on this. I'm just so, so thrilled with staff's work here um, and willingness to um, as they always are, uh, to lis- listen to different perspectives on this. I really appreciate um, uh, their work as well as um, the, the developers who, who weighed in on this and Arch and, and other affordable uh, housing agencies, as well as the Chamber and others. This is just a great example of getting to uh, the right type of policy um, and, and being willing to compromise on so, on some core parts of this program. And, and maybe one that I would just highlight is the, the layered incentives, for example. Um, you know, setting that AMI too high is a giveaway. Um, but setting it too low, as we discussed, um, you know, no one's going to use the MFT and certainly none of us want that. So, you know, the, you know, the developers would have probably have preferred eighty percent and Arch would prefer fifty percent, but you know, we, we landed on about sixty-five percent there, right in the middle. Uh, I think that's, that's a great, great compromise. And I think um, compromises like that are throughout this uh, the, this policy. So I'm thrilled with the results and a great job all around and uh, I'm ready to, to vote on this and move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Zon.
Yes, thank you. You know, I too appreciate all of the hard work to get us to this point. Uh, my understanding is the King County uh, Regional Affordable Housing just uh, published their dashboard that shows by city, the, the needs and the gap in each of the cities. And so the need is great and we need to move with urgency to uh, build more housing at all price points, but especially to be able to bring in the, the workforce housing at these levels. So I appreciate this work. My question would be, when we talk about the administrative cost for the compliance verification, is that going to be done by the city or by Arch? Or by the developer?
Yeah, Councilmember Zon, right now we're looking into the, the overall administration for the MFT. As you're noting, there are a couple of changes that we're doing with the rent stabilization and the parking that we want to sharpen our pencils a little bit to, to be most uh, efficient and effective in how we do that monitoring. It's a combination of Arch, City and individual project managers, so that the apartment managers for the building. So as we kind of move to the next phase, we'll have a bit more information on administration of the program.
Okay, and then my last question is on the parking approach. So my understanding from the last couple of presentations is that for folks in this AMI range we're trying to reach, most of them rely on their vehicle. So I would like to understand as we implement this uh, alternative approach of the thirty percent uh, discount, what maybe it is gathering both qualitative and quantitative data to understand um, what kind of, of cost burden for the, the renters that have vehicles and the additional costs that they're going to have related to parking. So to the degree that we can get some information as this program is rolled out to better understand the implications of that. And also as we learn more about what's happening in the other art cities, because what I understand from the presentation is that the other art cities may be looking at a different approach to parking, that perhaps as we understand more about that, it's part of the evaluation of how that part of it is working.
Yes, we'll add that to the list of things that we'll do uh, qualitative and quantitative monitoring for in the future.
Great, thank you very much.
So, you know, what's being proposed tonight is the first time I've ever seen developers and affordable housing providers come up with a compromise that they both feel is really going to work. And I just really wanted all the people involved in this, the discussions here. This is a very unique uh, proposal here because I don't think that any one of these elements seeds on its own, the way it's written. It's really a, a grouping of these incentives that's going to give us that. So when we're measuring our success and it's really important that we do that, I don't know that we're able to do it uh, one incentive alone next to another. And I know you understand that, Emile. So I hope that, you know, we, we, I don't want to tell you how to measure success, but I think we all want to know if this is a successful that we're implementing here. And at what point do we reassess? Because we can change anything. So we're going this with of interests and intentions. And in four years, if we may find that we did not create affordable housing as we intended, we can make changes. Um, but at what point do we look back? Would you amend? And reassess?
Yeah, we, I think we'd like to see at least a few years of uh, usage, Mayor Robinson. So I think we can maybe start, start with a few years of usage and then based on some of the experiences we have, we can always have uh, council consider uh, any fine tuning that they might uh, deem warranted.
So maybe year four, we reassess and, and uh, sure that this is working. And um, I, I have one question. If you reference the fact that this program may require a, additional administrative uh, additional administration and cost, and I'm wondering if indeed it does, where will we get the funding for that? Do you know?
Councilor, Mayor Robinson, I think uh, I'll take a swing at this. Council's initiating a number of programs or expanding a number of programs. For example, you're looking at how to institute your fifteen ninety program that will come with a fairly significant administrative expense. So what we're going to suggest is that we take a look at the overall housing programs that council's added over the last six or eight months, plus the next couple of items that you'll be taking up and bring back a look at what those administrative items will add up to and what the different funding opportunities are. Uh, and then have council make a more holistic uh, decision about how that can all work together.
True. Well, I am very heard of, of what's being proposed tonight and I want to thank staff for moving as quickly as you did. During a challenge time, you worked fast bringing this forward and you, you consulted all the people I think you needed to consult with. I thank you for this. Very nimble of the city. So uh, are there any other comments or questions? I'm gonna try to look at everybody. I don't see things. So uh, is there a motion to direct staff?
I move to direct staff and prepare the MFT program update for public hearing and final action at a future meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. We have one more study session, Mr. Miyaki.
Yes, uh, yes, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, the council received its informational first quarter cultural and economic update. And just by way of background, the council receives quarterly updates on economic development activities from the staff. Tonight's presentation will be a, a report focused on economic recovery um, as well, um, as well as capacity building and partnerships, small business support, as well as workforce development. Um, the council did receive its last uh, economic update on February twenty-second of twenty twenty-one, as well as a dedicated arts update back in May tenth of twenty twenty-one. Um, tonight, um, presentation is an informational briefing again and no formal action is being requested on, by council. Uh, joining us this evening is Jesse Canado, our Chief Economic Development Officer, as well as accompanying him is Philly Marsh, their Economic Development Manager for both from the Community Development Department. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Emile. Jesse, I'm sorry.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. We're also joined tonight by Anthony Gill, our Economic Development Specialist. Uh, that being it, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, we're looking forward to tonight's presentation. It is the first full quarter of work under the new economic development plan that the council approved in November. Um, tonight's session, as the city manager mentioned, is for information only. Next slide, please. Uh, we did want to start with a quick note of celebration that uh, four-two-five Business Magazine recognized Bellevue as the best city on the east side. The, the residents, uh, or the readers of four-two-five Business Magazine recognized this city of Bellevue as the best city on the east side. So a quick note of celebration for the city as we think about the rest of the year and economic reopening and people returning to the city. It's a great recognition of the, the spirit of collaboration and partnership that exists in Bellevue. It helps make it such a great place to live, work, learn and play. Um, as we go through the rest of tonight's presentation, well, you'll know that we're talking in broad brushstrokes. We recognize that there are still uh, significant numbers of individuals and individual businesses that are struggling or working their way through the pandemic and the economic uncertainty of, of the, of the year. But in broad brushstrokes, Bellevue is in one of the most enviable positions in the country as we look at the economic uh, prospects for the rest of the year and going forward. Individuals um, are returning. Our major employers at Microsoft and Amazon, Facebook are ten percent in capacity and planning to ramp back up over the coming months. More people are walking and, and visiting our shops and restaurants and cultural facilities in Bellevue. And as they start to return in larger numbers, they'll see a city that didn't sleep uh, during the pandemic. Downtown parks, new northeast uh, entrances opening, light rail is now really visible and we're eager for those trains. Residential and office buildings are going up across the city. And um, as you'll hear about a little bit later tonight, we're working with the BDA again to bring activation to the Grand Connection, wayfinding, tables and chairs. Folks coming back to Bellevue will find a city that is eager to welcome them back. And you'll hear a lot about some of the details of what we're doing to make sure that is widely known and how we're continuing to help those who are impacted uh, through the rest of the year. With that, I will hand it over to Philly Marsh to take us through the presentation.
Thank you, Jesse. So um, the cultural and economic development uh, division, we manage the ongoing efforts of business attraction and marketing, as well as business retention, expansion, as well as the public arts program. Um, and this is on top of the advancing the six new focus areas in the five-year economic development plan that was adopted back in November. Um, as was mentioned, you received a dedicated arts update earlier this month. So this quarterly update will fo- focus on that continued recovery tracking from the COVID pandemic, um, our partnership and capacity building work, small business support and workforce. And then we'll give you a preview of what we're working on uh, for the next quarter. Um, and although now there's increased optimism with the vaccine rollout and stated reopening, um, and we definitely see that within the data, we're continuing to diligently monitor these recovery um, indicators um, to, to ensure we continue to trend upward. Um, so tonight, we're gonna report on unemployment trends, commercial real estate and tourism. Um, and in these slides, Bellevue is represented by the dark blue line. So on this slide, as you can see, unemployment, uh, the end of last year, we did see that uptick um, towards uh, December. Um, but um, the Q one saw that trending down again. Um, the March twenty-twenty-one unemployment rate was four point four percent, and this is on par with many of our national peers and tracks the lowest among our regional peers. Um, this is still double the pre-pandemic unemployment rate of two point two percent, but reopening efforts that consumer confidence and travel uh, should result in the lowering of that unemployment. Well, unemployment is uh, represented of Bellevue's residents, um, and that's faring comparatively well. We also do look at total employment, um, and Bellevue did lose uh, over eight percent of total jobs from um, over the year of Q three, two thousand nineteen to Q four, twenty twenty. Um, and we do see that this is concentrated in businesses under twenty-five employees and is most likely a reflection of the downtown service industry that was highly impacted from the work from home policies. So we're gonna continue to monitor this number and hope that it bounces back up um, as the reopening efforts continue. Looking at commer- commercial real estate, um, you know, vacancies increased nationally. Um, but uh, Bellevue did fare much better than, than others. Uh, in this graph, again, Bellevue is the dark blue line. Uh, Seattle is the green line, uh, Sunnyville is the yellow line. So you see that uh, Bellevue had a much flatter increase than some of our peers. Um, and the best news that we're hearing is that there's optimism that the worst is behind us. And we're seeing this um, with a significant drop in new subleases, as well as the reemergence of tenant activity, um, including some competition um, uh, among the available spaces. Uh, we were, one property mentioned that, you know, that existing slack in the markings, marketplace resulted in more tenants looking to move into uh, spaces and a healthy competition of companies bidding for that space. Uh, so we're gonna be continuing to watch that through, through the end of the year. We want to note that that is representative of existing supply, um, and that our development pipeline is still very healthy. Um, we have over nine million office space or square feet of office space uh, in development and over ninety percent of that space is already pre-leased, uh, including the previously announced Amazon and Facebook growth and that secondary employment that comes with it. This represents at least thirty-five thousand uh, jobs in Bellevue. Some highlights from our new construction include Amazon's Bellevue six hundred. Uh, Phase One has begun with the parking demolition, um, and that occupancy is expected in twenty twenty-four. Uh, Scansas Building, uh, the construction is slated to begin soon with the completion scheduled for fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three. And then the Bellevue five-five-five, if you've walked down the Grand Connection recently, um, that is sprouting up out of the ground, um, and a really great sight to see. Switching over to visitor trends, um, we all know that the tourism industry was the hardest hit industry, um, and that goes for Bellevue as well. Um, it resulted in single digit, digit occupancy, um, right when the pandemic started. Um, however, with the vaccine rollout, reopening and the new CDC guidelines, there's a lot of optimism uh, for the start of this recovery over the summer months. Uh, a report shows that seventy percent of Americans uh, do have travel plans in the next three months. Um, and we're definitely seeing that within the numbers. What you see here are the March numbers with hotel occupancy up to a twelve-month high of thirty-three point four percent. And we actually just got the April numbers as well, which have another healthy clip of a extra five percent increase. So we're gonna want to see that healthy clip continue over the, over the summer. Um, and that represented almost a hundred thousand overnight visitors here in Bellevue over that month. Um, in talking with Maiden Bowers Center, uh, they hope to return and definitely project a more typical event activity uh, in the fall. They already have um, looks like eight books or eight events booked for both September and October. Um, so definitely getting those back on, on the books will increase our travelers here to, to Bellevue. Um, and Visit Bellevue is continuing to increase their marketing now that there's that confidence in the activity in the tourism industry. Um, and we're uh, participating with them on the Festival and Events Council to help attract and incubate festivals and events in Bellevue. They can really serve as a catalyst for economic growth. And so on the note of partnering, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Anthony Gill. He's our Economic Development Specialist and he's gonna talk about some of our capacity building and partnership work.
Good evening, councilmembers. As we emerge from COVID nineteen, we're working hand in hand with many different partners on a number of different capacity building efforts. Uh, we continue to work very closely with the Bellevue Downtown Association on downtown placemaking, including outdoor dining and new activations along the Grand Connection. This quarter, we actually partnered with their team to host a series of workshops focused on placemaking with downtown stakeholders. And a report from that effort is currently in development and will be presented in the future. This year, we al- will also see the return of the Yellow Lanterns and outdoor seating along the Grand Connection. This summer, the lanterns will be concentrated on the southwest portion of the Grand Connection route due to the major construction projects that are underway at Compass Plaza and along the pedestrian corridor. We also have a continued strong partnership with the BDA and the Chamber for the Hate Has No Home Here campaign. BDA quickly installed banners along the Grand Connection and the Chamber has assisted with business sticker distribution. And the Chamber is also working with us on a door-to-door business outreach campaign in the crossroads area to connect and communicate information on business resources and opportunities for businesses that are located out there. Finally, uh, staff from our team, as Philly mentioned, are also participating in the festivals, Festival and Events Council uh, with Visit Bellevue. And that's really focused on incubating growing festivals and events in Bellevue so that they can serve as a catalyst for future economic growth. Next slide, please. We're also very excited to be working again this year with the OBMA, the Old Bellevue Merchants Association, BDA and our Transportation Department to bring out- to bring outdoor dining back for another summer. Last year's program was a great success with a survey finding that more than eighty percent of people wanted to see the spaces return as an annual program. So after several months of planning and promotion with the restaurants, including several permitting workshops, the extended spaces rolled out on Main Street last week. Five different restaurants are participating with parking lane spaces, plus more than forty others utilizing sidewalk spaces and private patio spaces across the city. These are restaurants located downtown and on Main Street, but also in a number of other neighborhoods like Belred and Goulburn. The full list of participating restaurants is available on the BDA's website. And this program is another really unique example of a true public-private partnership because the BDA and the City of Bellevue are providing program management and marketing support. Microsoft is sponsoring the program with some financial support, and the restaurants are responsible for filling their patio spaces with tables, chairs, and other fixtures. This year, the Bellevue Alfresco Program will be running for approximately four months, so mid-May to mid-September. And we're really excited to give the restaurants and the retailers that additional time to boost their revenue. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Philly.
Thanks, Anthony. So again, the data shows signs of optimism, but I think it's important to remember just how hard this past year has been for our small businesses, and we will continue to support them as we shift from relief mode to recovery mode. For over a year, most of our small business focus has been on ensuring that our businesses have the information and resources they need to access financial assistance and relief to weather the pandemic. And Q1 did continue to focus on released resources, including promoting programs such as the Working Washington Core Grant, PPP Extension, Shuttered Venues Operating Grant, Restaurant Revitalization Fund that just closed today. All of this, along with the free one-on-one assistance provided by Business Impact Northwest, as well as the SBDC Center. There's some numbers up on the on the screen that kind of represent the scale of relief needed for our businesses. I think the important thing to highlight is our partnership with Business Impact Northwest that supported over two hundred businesses with close to six hundred engagements. Each week, there's still new businesses accessing that program, as well as that high rate of return of previous clients following up with additional needs and questions. In fact, we were just reported that every single restaurant that Business Impact Northwest has worked with, they ensured applied for that Restaurant Revitalization Fund opportunity. And that majority, the majority of that assistance has been focused on navigating financial relief, but as businesses do kind of come out of that relief mode into recovery mode, they're gonna be looking for more of that business operation assistance. And we're gonna continue to help and stay nimble, adapting our programming to assist the businesses where they're at and with what they need. And our small business and entrepreneurship support continued, most focused through the Startup 425 Program. Vital ongoing programs such as the Foundation's Courses and Essential Series have continued. But the program has also pivoted to create new programming to assist the most vital small businesses and their needs in response to COVID. Our Foundation Series that we held in the spring was held again in a virtual format with a hundred and eighty-four registrants. And one testimonial that we received was, wow, this was the most informative webinar I've watched during the pandemic. So that's a big shout out to one of our advisors, Janie Seiko, who has a gift, just a gift of making finance fun, which there's a lot of finance education over this past year, for sure. But what I want to focus on is this Booster Business Tools and Resources for Going Digital. This is a new series built out of the Startup 425 Innovation Lab in partnership with Bellevue College. It was really created out of the fact that we witnessed those establishments with little to no online presence struggle the most through the pandemic. So it's targeted at sustaining and growing small businesses. It's really focused on those businesses who are disproportionately affected by COVID-19, with the emphasis on businesses owned by women, minorities, and people of color. And what it does is it provides participants access to complimentary and no-cost solutions to get their businesses online and or expand their existing digital presence. It's a free one-day workshop. The morning educational series will be curated by Bellevue College and feature digital success stories from Eastside Small Business Owners and insights from a variety of experts in technology tools, social media, and marketing. And then this is gonna be followed by an opportunity for attendees to connect one-on-one with regional consultants, service firms, and those technology providers to engage and see what tools might be right for them. And then we do anticipate hosting the same series one more time in October, and then again in Q1 of 2022, to really build the momentum of it. And really, the intent here is to make these online tools approachable and kind of have those bite-sized baby steps for business owners who are unfamiliar or uncomfortable with an online presence. Another area that we really dive deep into in Q1 is our workforce development. So this was a brand-new focus area that came out of the Economic Development Plan. And in Q1, our division participated in close to twenty regional, as well as local workforce-related conversations to understand the ecosystem, gaps, opportunities for connection, collaboration, and increased Bellevue benefit. Our regional strategy participation included being an active participant in the Regional Equitable Prosperity Plan. This included participation on workforce related to access to good jobs and diverse talent. We also are closely connected with the Workforce Development Council and their Regional Plan for Equitable Economic Recovery. This is a three- to five-year blueprint to align shared priorities between regional partners. So we're at the table really understanding how those regional strategies can have Bellevue benefit. And then we've also been working at regional or locally as well toward better industry connection and facilitation. One program I want to highlight is the Bellevue Chamber Internship Pilot. So this is working with Bellevue Chamber as well as Bellevue College to develop new partnerships with small to mid-size businesses to create internship programs and provide that necessary support for both the intern hosts, the companies, as well as the students for mutually beneficial experience that will help lead to increased Bellevue internships and job placement. These small to mid-size companies traditionally don't have internship programs, and yet they are often a critical step and on-ramp to career growth at some of our more competitive companies here in Bellevue. Another area that we dived into in the workforce development realm is just employment resource navigation. We saw that there was a need for better navigation of what we do have available. So we created an employment resource webpage. And there's actually two two webpages, one that's more employer-facing for employers who want to learn more and partner, invites them to contact us to partner, and we can connect them with some of our workforce providers, as well as a resident-facing employment resource webpage. And this connects residents to all of the City of Bellevue-funded employment resources, many of which that are funded through our Human Services Program. We've also include workforce and job opportunities in our newsletter and our social media content. This is job fairs, upskilling opportunities, such as free skill training and professional programs at our colleges, as well as returnship programs at some of our our large businesses. We're gonna continue to monitor workforce opportunities and work across city departments to implement communication strategies that promote these resources to our residents, and this is through mini-city hall, neighborhoods, human services, as well as City of Bellevue communication channels. And then one thing I I hope you may have seen today is we just promoted the Bellevue College Welcome Back Center event that's taking place on June first. This event is to support internationally educated professionals, learn about the resources to help them prepare to practice their profession here in Washington State. This is a tactic in our ED Plan Workforce Chapter, and we will be measuring the success of it and evaluate opportunities to evaluate expansion of this program. And with that, I will turn it over to Jesse to talk about what's coming up next. Thank you.
Thank you, Philly. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, so all the work that you've heard about tonight will be continuing over the next several months. It's a substantial body of work, but we do also have a substantial body of work that we'll be bringing forward to the council within terms of reports and updates in the next couple of quarters. Of course, we will continue working with our small businesses and our large employers around COVID business assistance to make sure that they have the the resources and the tools they need to navigate the end of the pandemic and successfully reopen. We are conducting as well a study of commercial lease arrears and issues. So that is a study of tenant businesses and property owners across the East Side, and we're doing this in partnership with our five of our neighboring cities to understand what debt burdens may be impacting our property owners, large and small, as well as our tenant businesses here in Bellevue. We are in the middle of that study and hope to bring back some of the results in Q3. The the good news so far is that it does appear that many of our smaller tenant businesses across the spectrum have been able to catch up or get some type of relief from their property owners, from their landlords. So those those debts may not be quite as large as we were initially expecting them to be, which is a good sign. But we do have some additional discovery to do there before we bring that information back to council. As Philly mentioned, we will be working with our crossroads businesses to engage them and start capacity building in the Crossroads Neighborhood in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber, which is part of the the capacity building outside of downtown that was outlined in the ED Plan. Anthony mentioned that the outdoor dining program will be running over the next several months. We'll be working with our internal partners and our external partners to make sure that that program is set up for continuation in the future years. We've heard support from the council and support from our businesses and residents. So we'll make sure that is squared away and ready to to become a staple program here for Bellevue. We are also in the middle of our biennial business survey. So every odd numbered year, we do a census-style survey of our businesses here in the community. And we will be wrapping that up in June and hope to bring back the initial report to council in Q3. We'll also be working, as Anthony mentioned, with the BDA to activate the Grand Connection route and make sure that folks learn about the Grand Connection and all of the cultural activities that happen on that route as we welcome people back to the city. And we'll continue to engage with Greater Seattle Partners and other regional leaders around the Regional Prosperity Plan to make sure that there are benefits for the East Side and support for Bellevue businesses and workers as we work with our regional partners on a strong geographically equitable recovery for the greater Puget Sound region. And with that, that will wrap us up for this evening, and thank you, members of council. Happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, that was a great presentation. You so much. Let's let I'll just, I know everybody's gonna comment, so I'll start council members on, then Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Barks Robertson, and still Councilmember Lee and myself, council members on.
Yes, thank you. Wow, what a presentation. You know, every time you give a presentation, I think that there isn't more to it, and then you bring us back some new strategies and and plans that you're putting in place. So I so appreciate all of the work that you're doing and in partnership, right, with BDA and the Chamber and Bellevue College. And in particular, I appreciate the fact that you've expanded beyond downtown for the outdoor dining and also the capacity building, because I think that'll be really important, and I look forward to when we can broaden it even more to, you know, Factoria and Newport Hills and Lake Hills and and all of the neighborhoods that have businesses as well. And and also the the digital presidents and and the marketing. I think that that we have certainly seen during COVID just how important that is. So I appreciate that. A couple of questions that I have, and that is affordable retail space and incubators. I wanted to understand where that falls within our our ED Plan. And then festivals that we might anticipate in Bellevue still this year? Data on business closures in Bellevue and really understanding a bit more about where those lost businesses are and whether they are on life support and will come back, or they they are just closed for good. And on the workforce development, construction apprenticeship, I know we talked about internships. And I'm wondering about the construction aspect, just because there's so much construction going on here in Bellevue, whether there are some pipelines and opportunities to connect workers in our community to the very jobs that are right here in Bellevue that that may be very, very helpful. Anyway, look forward to the rest of the pieces about the Grand Connection activation and the leased rear study. So good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council members on. I can tackle the affordable retail question and the business closures, and then I'll hand it off to Philly to talk about festivals and events and construction apprenticeships. With regards to affordable retail space and other types of commercial space, that is a study that we're looking to do later this, watch later this year. One of our strategies in the ED Plan is a citywide retail study. That project is still planning to go forward. We're just on pause for the moment as we rehire for the position of the manager who is supposed to help lead that. So once we get that person in place, we will be able to move that body of work forward and come back to the council with a report on data and and suggestions for making improvements. With regards to to business closures, we can bring some more data forward in the next quarterly update. We have done an initial scan of the the changes that happened over the last two years. We can say that Bellevue did lose about four hundred more businesses in a normal year in 2020. And some of that is, I mean, that's some of that is due specifically to COVID, and some of that is due to redevelopment as well. A lot of buildings in Bellevue have been taken down for new construction. And we're gonna see what data we can get in terms of what what precipitated some of those additional closures. We do know that the loss of the daytime office population was a big impact to many of our small and local businesses. We also know that there are some business owners who chose to to close or retire or sell their business as as they saw the the outlook for 2020. So we'll we'll see what additional data we can get and bring that back in a future report.
Great.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Philly?
Well, I'll just tackle the festivals and events. So we're working closely with the Parks Department Special Events Committee. Last we heard is many of the summer events have pushed a little bit further into September. But the the big ones are the Downtown Arts Market will return, as well as Bellwether. And then kind of I think as we see these reopening efforts and some guidelines and standards be adopted, we hope to see a few more towards the the later side of the fall and then be ready for 2022.
Okay. The Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll echo some of those comments. Great presentation, a lot of great data about our economic recovery and capacity building and our small business support and and workforce development. And appreciate adding the unemployment trends in there as well. That seems very a positive, at least from a from a Bellevue perspective. So that's really great to see. I mean, still certainly a lot of work to be done in other areas that were more heavily impacted, obviously, by the pandemic, but some really overall really, really great stuff and appreciate the comprehensive update. Two questions for you. A, I believe I saw that Mr. McGowan, head of the Greater Seattle Partners, has recently left. How does that impact the City of Bellevue? And can you at all let us know what their plan is for getting someone else in that role?
Yes, that's a thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor. So yes, Brian McGowan, CEO of Greater Seattle Partners, has taken a job opportunity back in his hometown of Atlanta to work for a large private redevelopment firm there. It's a great opportunity for him. With GSP, we are going to continue our work with them to support the economic recovery and reengage with global businesses that may be looking for new locations in Seattle, in the Seattle area. So we are working with their new staff. One of Brian's last actions was to hire three new staff members focused on foreign direct investment, domestic economic recruitment and research. So we'll be working with them starting next week to help line Bellevue up for the future.
Great, great. Thank you for that. And then also, it's something I believe I mentioned last time, and I was hoping we Great, great. Thank you for that. And then also, it's something I believe I mentioned last time, and I was hoping we might include in this presentation, although I forgot to mention it to you earlier, but certainly the next presentation, I would love to get an update on where we where we're at on the 5G open innovation lab. This is a central piece, at least as far as I see it, that could fuel our economic development for 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 decades. You know, this partnership, for those who are not aware, with T-Mobile, the University of Washington, and and in the city of Bellevue. You know, really, this is going to fund a lot of startups in healthcare, retail, transportation and 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 energy. And I guess I'm getting a little bit concerned that we're not hearing any updates on this. I know you have a lot on your plate and certainly COVID and the pandemic, you know, shifted things for us. But boy, if if there ever was an economic opportunity as as it relates to this, it's the economic development, it's 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 this. And I would really appreciate a more substantial update on this, just because of the tremendous impact and the tremendous opportunity there is for Bellevue. You know, just last week, we're talking about what a great smart city we are. But if 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 we don't keep up and are able to deploy our 5G, we're gonna fall behind and other cities may pick up where we unfortunately weren't able to deploy and make these opportunities available to not only this innovation lab, but just startups, you know, throughout the country that would want to be here because of 5G. So would love to know your thoughts on 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 that, Jesse. I don't want to put you on the spot. And again, if if you want to provide that during the next update, but you know, for for me, and I think for this council, you know, certainly for our priorities, 5Gs were specifically laid out there. So we'd really, really like a a good update on that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, we'll look to bring a more comprehensive update in Q three. That, just as a quick note, that partnership with the 5G Open Innovation Lab is going very well. I think they're on their second or third cohort at this moment of of startups. So that project is moving forward very well. We'll look for some additional data for the next presentation.
Fantastic. Thanks, Jesse.
Deputy City Manager told me a couple ago, we were gonna the status of our 5G implementation. And so we we talked to him about that.
Terrific. Thank you.
For the council. Okay, uh, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Also, thanks to Jesse, Philly and Anthony. Really appreciate that date. Just a few questions. So given the commercial real estate opportunities, how are we leveraging that to recruit underrepresented minority owned businesses to Bellevue, whether it's increasing awareness or or what have you? So kind of building on Councilmember Zon's point about the affordable retail space study, can trying to find opportunities to make that connection. For the marketing and advertising related to tourism and such, how are we making sure that that marketing is inclusive? Just looking at the visit Bellevue website, especially the homepage, I think, you know, we could probably showcase a bit more diversity and and representation across groups. And then in terms of the business retention and engagement, what counts as an engagement? You may have mentioned this in past briefings, but I was just curious. And then can we add churn to the metrics that we are? I think you spoke to it when you responded to Councilmember Zion's point, but I think it'd be good to track over time as well. And then also metrics for the workforce activities or programs. I didn't see that. And I like was mentioned before about apprentice utilization as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Barksdale, I can address a couple of those and then hand it off to Philly to touch on the small business work and the marketing piece. With regards to the business retention engagement, we do count, it's two major things. It's either when we go and have a long detailed engagement with the the company to understand kind of their pain points, their their pride points and how the city can support their their industry. And those tend to be thirty to thirty minutes to an hour long engagements with those companies. And we start to bring them into some of the additional discussions or programs that we're working on. The other thing we'll count as a BRE engagement is when there's specifically some technical assistance that's provided. If a company comes to us needing help with navigating permitting or getting connections with business advisors, we will, once we make those connections and successfully navigate them through their requests, we count that as an engagement as well. With regards to to churn in the the local business environment, that is something we can look to bring back some data on in Q three. We do have some some good data we're tracking in terms of business formation and then business closures on an annual basis. We were will dissect that by industry type and owner demographics to the best of our ability, but that information is not always readily available. But we'll look to that for Q three. And then with regards to workforce metrics, we are still in the process of baselining. There's a lot we don't know in the ecosystem, so we're still in the discovery process. And we'll look to baseline some of the some of our goals for for our workforce program and probably the next six months. Once we know a little bit more about what's doable and where where things have been in previous years.
And I can just touch on the marketing and advertising as well as the commercial real estate in working with GSP and their economic recovery framework. I think that's one thing that was very important and that we'll see through that. And we will bring those that 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 framework to council and the findings and alignment with Bellevue to council at a later date. But representation matters. And also, there's some very detailed metrics in that plan of how to meet some of those those goals.
Awesome. Thanks. And on the engagement and churn, I think it'd be really interesting to see what types of engagements influence churn. Thank you.
Councilmember Robert.
Thank you. I love these presentations because while a lot of people were downward trending or retooling during COVID, the investments in our city have only grown. And the metrics obviously need some help with some of the employment rates and such. But they are coming back. I work downtown and people are coming back. So that is really exciting to see. So love all the programs. Want to keep going full bore ahead. Absolutely agree with Deputy Mayor Noonhouse about 5G. I think that that's really important that we can don't take our eye off that ball. T-Mobile, their US headquarters is here in Bellevue. And they're leaders in 5G. We want them rolling out, but we're not the city with the highest 5G. So let's keep going on that. I just have a couple of questions with regard more mainly to office, but to the extent it applies to retail, I'd be curious about that as well. So we have a ten percent vacancy rate right now with the existing buildings that we have. What is considered a healthy vacant balance for vacancy rate? Because you don't want to be zero, because then no businesses can come in. So what's a good, what what's the best? We're the hottest, you know, most stable, healthy market. What is that number?
A good question, Councilwoman Robertson. A healthy vacancy rate is somewhere in the range of like four to six or seven percent. And as you know, previously Bellevue had such a low vacancy rate that we actually didn't have space for new companies to enter. So we are seeing exactly what you're saying.
Right, exactly. So then we're gonna have a lot lot more coming online, but a lot of them are already filled or pre-filled. So I'm wondering what, if anything, starting in, I think it's starting in January, if not sooner, there's going to be a new tax on the big city across the lake for high earners. Where anyone making more than a hundred and fifty thousand for a job for a company of a certain size, I can't remember if it's fifty employees, they'll be paying a tax on the overage. And that is going to affect a lot of businesses, particularly with regard to professional services. Are we seeing interest from some of those financial sector law firms, et cetera, services about coming over here? Is that having an impact? And how can we make sure that if people are shopping to put their company that they are aware that we have that edge of not having that high earners tax?
It's a great question. And Philly has been doing a lot of great work engaging with our local brokers. Philly, could you tackle that question?
Sure. Yeah, I think we're definitely seeing some increased interest of regional movements. And that's gonna continue. We did revamp our website and I do have some marketing efforts that do highlight Bellevue as a busy business friendly location. And we're kind of getting out there a little bit more to to ensure that everyone, both in the region as well as nationally and globally knows about Bellevue and the advantages of doing business in Bellevue.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Love this. Super proud of all your guys' work. Well done.
Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I would say at the beginning, you guys are just having too much fun. I mean, you're really doing a great job and you're really going into all kinds of things. And I think it's tying it together so well. I think that's what's exciting is that there's so many pieces that you know, it's not scattered and you're really, you're really, I think, have a very positive approach to this whole matter and presentations and all that. And I think that's exciting. And that kind of energy and excitement carries over to the people you're working with too on the on the community. So that's that's very good. You're doing great representation of Bellevue and also carrying out these programs. I agree with a lot of things that have been said. I do. I do say think that I'm I'm not too worried about the 5G. I don't think we want to kind of get the idea out that kind of we're not doing things because we are. It's a very important thing. We all agree with that. And maybe just giving a little more information and see how we're going along and making sure we are, because I I know we are. And you know, that's something we've been working on for several years. And so it's it's a program that's been built up over time and absolutely is important. And, you know, T-Mobile is not going to let it let it drop. So I'd like to see some more, you know, more communication about that would be helpful. And the other thing that I think is 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 interesting to look forward to is and maybe concentrate on is the expansion of, and you mentioned this, it's not all downtown. We know that the rest of the parts of the city are growing. And I you know, have a little bit, maybe give a little bit more assessment of how the business communities are doing in, you know, other parts of the city. I mean, you've got East Gate and you know, Newport has some businesses there. And of course, Factoria is a is a growing area. And Bell Red, I mean, Bell Red, we're doing, you know, we're gonna be looking at that. In the meantime, things are happening out there. And it's just amazing going down Bell Red Road and seeing all the construction and changes going on. So we have a number of areas. And then of course, people, you know, East Gate has has always been a big business area. It's kind of quiet, but it's it's at one time had more people employed there than downtown. So it's, we have a lot of zones out there. And I know you touched on those. What's the, what's the extent of you're seeing the growth and and development? And what are we doing to help that in these these other areas outside of downtown?
Councilmember Stokes, what I can offer is that a lot of the data on our other business districts, Factoria, Crossroads, East Gates, and some of the the businesses in Newport Hills and others, they're getting touched as part of the business survey work. And so we'll be able to see some of the trends from that information and then engage with neighborhoods that look like they need additional attention. So we'll hope to bring that data back to you in Q three. We do know that there continues to be a lot of strong interest in downtown and Bell Red because of the transportation amenities, in particular, the light rail and the additional bus service that's going into those neighborhoods. We do know that East Gate has traditionally been an area that has a lower interest rate from office perspective, just because it's not seen as amenitized quite as well as downtown or Bell Red. So we'll be working on that probably in twenty twenty two to see what we can do to help in that office market as well.
Yeah, with the the growth along the quarter and in I ninety, that's going to I think really stimulate a lot more going on East Gate. And we we talked, and Jennifer, Councilmember Robertson knows this too, when we were working with the East Gate study and everything, we talked about, and we knew that this was going to be a growing area. And it's taken a long time, but Issaquah is just going like mad coming by there. And that whole area is is in coming up too. So we in addition to downtown, we have these other areas in Bellevue that are attractive for businesses. So I know you're working on all that. And we'd like to hear, you know, next time, a little bit more about how that connects and you know, what we're doing there, what the trends are there as well. It's just, you know, you have a more amazing amount of things to to keep up with. So it's we just get a little bit more about that. But it's just fantastic. You're doing great, a great job. And I think what we're attracting people coming to Bellevue for is the the things we're doing to work with them. You know, the tax situation is always the thing, but that's something people kind of jump on as if that's the big factor. It is a factor, but the big factor is what we're doing to work with the community and amenities and and the growth and the attitude in Bellevue. I think it's just fantastic. And you know, the development staff is just doing a great job. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as I've been saying all last year, that you guys, you know, the economist staff has been working extremely hard and challenging to, you know, cope with the COVID nineteen situation. So I compliment you guys. And while you're doing that, you know, obviously, some of the things that we have been asking about, you know, just the last half an hour may need to have more attention because we are going to recover. And so we need to be looking forward. And some of the things, you know, like the GSP are looking for recovery plan. So it's related. So hopefully, you know, all the the problem of COVID nineteen is going to end. So the the things that I'm interested in is then looking at how we are going to be positioning ourselves for the 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 recovery. You know, that includes some of the new new norms, maybe we need to be looking at that we learned from, you know, from the COVID nineteen. But more so, you know, some of the real things that we can, we're convinced that should be done. One example is, I think, I don't want to add anymore to it, but, you know, technology, 5G, you know, that is something we do need to get back to paying attention. And the other one, I think, Councilmember Stokes just mentioned, you know, we need to look at other areas of Bellevue that need to participate in this future economic development for the city. You you mentioned in one of your descriptions, what's next? You mentioned Crossroads Business Outreach. So you actually identify, I assume that's Crossroads area. So I would like to see how you are addressing some of the other areas. Like, you know, Councilmember Stokes just mentioned, East Gate, Newport Hills, Victoria, I ninety, you know, all those need to be looked at. I know you, again, you're so busy tied up with the COVID nineteen stuff, you know, that's something we have to tackle, which is unexpected. But I think that need to be, they need to be put on the agenda. And you need to be thinking about it. The other one is, of course, workforce development. That's another area. You mentioned it. But because of new technology, because of new, new way of doing things, we learn from the COVID nineteen. What, and we also know many people have lost jobs, right? So they have to be looking at retraining, doing new things. So I think that's still a very, very important area because that takes time, takes time to build up. You know, we talk about that in the old days about coding, you know, people are gonna change their job from old into new and have to learn. So I think that still should be right on the on the agenda, right on the on the attention. It may not be coding, but it could be something else. We need to be working with Bellevue College. We need to be working with other private, public institutions that can actually prepare our workers to do that. Because we're talking about Bellevue unemployment, right? They need to get the job with a new skill. So I would really like to see if you can put more attention back on that. And the another one is, you know, we're looking at a international relationship, US-China relationship, and that has a great impact, you know, on our economy, you know, directly. You're talking about tourism. You know, that's something we have to figure out whether we do. And then, of course, talents, we take have a lot of talent from all over the world. And, you know, so there's commerce that's going on that's being affected. So I think that that's something we 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 have to do because we actually have a global innovation exchange, GIX right here located in our Spring District. So what's going on there, right? We have an asset. We need to figure out what to do, how to develop it, how to use that to enhance the thing I just talked about. You know, one thing is, you know, how we're gonna talk about is a part of this economic development, GIX is You know, one thing is, you know, how we're going to talk about is part of this economic development, GIAX's entrepreneurship, right? That's innovation. And that is, especially after the last year, we're talking about social responsibility. Social entrepreneurship is becoming very important too. So I think we need to look at very innovative, creative things that, number one, encourages the economy. Second, it addresses social situations. So I think we need to really focus on what things we can do by utilizing community colleges, colleges, private companies, global corporations, Amazon, Microsoft, T-Mobile, you know, they all need to be looking at how to develop social technology and ultimately economic relationship and conditions. And I think Bellevue is right in the middle of all this stuff. We are right here. You know, our global relationship, it's here, it's our people. So let's figure out how we can do that and utilize our blessed position and talent and people we have in our community involved. You know, technology is the best way to provide equity and equality. Technology doesn't differentiate people, color, age, ability, whatnot. It's probably the best, you know, Gary Lott used to say, education is a great equalizer. And I'm saying that technology is a great equalizer. So let's look into that and let's really do something. I really like to see how we can focus that. And it works well with the whole region, the regional recovery system, because that's what they're working on, GSP. So I think we are right in the middle of this. We can really help through our, you know, very, very fortunate technology position. So I would like, I don't want you to talk about all that stuff. It's just too many, right? But I know you already got some of that in mind. So but I, we're just saying that I would like to, you come back in the next few reports or start thinking about what you have done in each of these areas. Let's get it going. Is this fair enough? If you'd like to say a few about it, if you want to, that's okay. If the mayor says we have time to do that. Otherwise, I'm happy to, you know, just have you come back to us. Otherwise, again, I see somebody just smiling. So maybe I have something to add. If you do, I'm very happy to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I'll say that you're right. We're, we are working on different programs and projects in each of those areas, too many to enumerate tonight. So we'll bring back some additional information on what we're doing in those areas in Q3 and Q4.
Okay. Well, I just appreciate my call conversation covered about everything I was going to ask you. That's great. Really want to mention to you three, the work that you've done through COVID. What a, what a challenging time. And yet you have worked hard. And it's obviously been effective. And I'm really proud of you and of our city and how you have carried through this time. And by, you know, kind of linking arms with everybody and bringing everybody and and that's the way Bellevue does things. So thank you much for your work. I, one question that I have is on the workforce development. And you already probably know what I'm going to ask, because I always ask about this. But I see what you're doing with Bellevue. And that's great. Just wondering, do you that as jobs come from Amazon and our other companies, that we will be able to harvest some of the talent that we have here in Bellevue? Is there a way to do that and to visit people for these higher paid jobs?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think, yes, there's, there's really a two-pronged approach to that particular body of work. I'll ask Philly to share some details in a moment. But overall, what we, what we understand after having talked to several members and leaders in the tech community is that for those who are entering the tech ecosystem as an employee for the first time, their best route in is through a small and medium sized employer, so that they can gain the experience and technical background that they need to then be competitive for jobs at an Amazon or a Microsoft or a Facebook. The feedback that we've gotten is trying to move somebody who's transitioning into tech directly into an Amazon job is setting them up for, to not be as successful as they could be. So really, the medium sized and small are going to be the entry route.
Which is what you're doing. And I just want to underscore that my desire is to provide people with the opportunity that may not have opportunity, that they have the opportunity through the support of the city and the institutions in our city that they can access these jobs if they're willing to, if they want them, and they're willing to work hard for them. So that's kind of my, Philly, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we can go back to Bellevue College too and get the concrete data. But in the conversation we had with them, the, their graduates, the majority of them actually do, in tech, actually do end up in those jobs. And it's not the first stop, as Jesse mentioned. I think the other thing in this area is there's a lot of talk and conversation around the wraparound services and the support needed for individuals who are transitioning into tech fields. It happens to be a very fast paced, high demand career. So where are those support systems that can be set up? So that is one thing with that pilot project that we're doing is having the interns actually be a cohort and be able to have that support and talk about their experiences, instead of just being the one intern in a new, in a company with a new program. But that goes through. So there's, there's a lot of, there's mentors in tech, which is a great program that's created that really focuses on making sure that those individuals who are entering tech careers have effective mentors that they can talk to and be coached with to really then succeed in that career shift, shift that they're doing.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? You'll have to speak. It's hard for, I think I see Councilmembers on.
Yeah, I actually just, thank you. I just had the question about construction apprenticeship. So maybe along with the other comments that you receive when you come back, if you could wrap that into the conversation. I believe that Councilmember Barksdale also asked about that as well. Thanks.
Okay, anything else? All right. I believe we are done. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. We'll see you next week.